Good afternoon. At this time, we'll open the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, March 25, 2024. Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum with Commissioners Altman, Dillinger, and Heribert present. If you would all please stand and lead as you lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands: one nation, unindiscernible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is the approval of the Executive Session Memoranda for March 25, 2024.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from March 11, 2024.
Some of them.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. Next up is bid openings. We have two. One for the Hamilton County Special Projects 2024 BP-10, the female annex boiler replacement.
The boy.
The female annex boiler replacement.
Sorry, just came up for you.
So, Mr. Turner.
The first bid packet on the boiler replacement is Dean Inc. Were they supposed to have?
No, they seem to read the name for this one into the record.
I'll just read.
Just the name.
Not the amount?
No, not for this one.
Okay. The second is from Sorrello, is that right? Plumbing company Inc.
Sorrello.
Sorrello. And the third one is from Gemco Constructors. The fourth one, no, that's only three. That appears to be the only three on that project any person present. No other bids.
No.
Recommend that be referred to Mr. Wood for review and recommendation at your next meeting.
Wood.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Next up is replacement plans for Bridge 143 Cherry Tree Road over Vestal Ditch in Clay Township.
The first bid packet is from Superior in Portage, Indiana. They acknowledge receipt of two addenda. Their Form 96, bid bond, non collusion affidavit, and financial statements are all included. The financial statements are sealed as permitted by law only if there are the low apparent bidder. The bid is $1,337,600. The next bid packet is from PONTEM in Indianapolis. They acknowledge receipt of the two addenda. Their non collusion affidavit, Form 96, bid Their bid, $1,596,121.156. The next bid packet is from Milestone. They acknowledge receipt of the two addenda. Their non collusion affidavit, Form 96, financial statements, and bid bond are all included. Their bid, $1,920,000. The next bid packet is from HISC Constructors. They acknowledge receipt of both addenda. Their Form 96, bid bond, non collusion affidavit, and financial statements are all included. They also acknowledge receipt of the addenda. Their bid, $1,457,000. The next bid packet is from Duncan Robertson. Their bid bond, non collusion affidavit, Form 96, and financial statements are all included. They also acknowledge receipt of both addenda. Their bid, $1,260,672.40. The next bid packet is from BD Construction. Their Form 96, along with the non collusion affidavit, is included. They acknowledge receipt of the addendum. They also have their non collusion affidavit, and their bid, $1,673,554.39. That appears to be all the bids on this project or any persons present. No other bids. None appearing. Recommend they be referred to the Highway Department to potentially provide recommendation later to debt.
Some of them. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'd like to extend our thanks to all of the bidders that participated in this bid project. Next up is Highway.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a very ripe agenda for you today. The only item I have for you is a road closure request for small structures 31006 and 31055. This is for structures located on LeMonge Road north of 226th Street and 226th Street east of LeMonge. These are being built together. With the closures starting on or after April 15, each structure will have 90 days of closure. But they will be staggered and overlap a bit, so it's a total of 150 days of total closure. So we're looking at having everything back open by September 12, 2024. If everything goes according to plan, we recommend the board approve.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
As I said, that's the only item I had for you today.
Hang on. One item I didn't get on the agenda rather quick, and it's kind of a contingency, actually. I thought I'd go and cover this in the sake of time. What this is for is this year's permission to move forward with bidding of roadway salt for next winter. Not sure we'll need to do this, but we might. We've got all municipalities and the salt reps coming in Wednesday to have a discussion on where everybody's at with their quantities and minimum requirements. So it could be that we'll have an opportunity to renew again to work out details on what obligations are still out there. But if not, and if we determine we need to offer bids, I wanted to go ahead and have this done so we can get the arrangements going.
Some of them. Second.
Discussion.
Do we have a highway meeting on April?
Well, that's the other thing. I don't have a lot for the agenda, so I don't think we need to unless there's a reason and you want to help. Do you know, Juan Connor?
There might be. Can I confirm with you guys later today?
Yeah.
Yeah, later today because then we have to cancel that better meeting.
You tell them this Friday?
It's April 5.
April 5.
The first.
We can or we need to. Just let me know.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next up, emergency management agency Shane.
Hi, good afternoon. I have before you today the hazardous materials emergency prepared is grant an amount of $9,000. This is for our annual transportation functional exercise that we will be doing this year. And this is, there's no match with this, with this $9,000 grant.
Move to first.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item I have is for two staff members to travel at two different times to Tennessee for section-specific training. So this is for like the planning section chief and the operations section chief for those employees to take their county vehicle to those locations.
Some of them.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Don't you have another meal thing?
And the final piece is a meal authorization request. This is for the EOC activation for the Eclipse. This is for about 55 people. That's actually more than that because we're going to activate on Friday with just a small group through Sunday. And then Monday, of course, will be the big day. This is about, I believe, 18 cents, or $18, I wish it was 18 cents per person. $18 per person, I believe, is what we ended up with the amount.
Some of them.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And you coordinated with 911 dispatch on figuring out who you had to be, correct?
Yes, and we are sharing that expense as well. And we did receive money from the county council since we didn't have all of that in our budget for the Eclipse.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Court of Administration, Jill. Welcome.
Good afternoon. We just have two public defender changes in Superior Court III. Jacob Saleth is moving to major felony from the misdemeanor position he was in. And then Lars Olson is going to move into the misdemeanor position. Judge Hughes had a major felony public defender set down, and so that's why we've had the movement.
Move to approve both contracts.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jill, I'd like to also thank you for all of your efforts in coordinating the folks, all those kids, the 30 kids that came the other day with Judge Gukins and Najara for the mock trial. And they loved it.
Good.
It went really well. So thanks for your help on that. Next up is Safety and Risk. Rebecca. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have two items to present to you today. The first is for an internal claim that was administered by our department. A privately-owned vehicle was damaged during an accident with a county dump truck. The vehicle has been repaired and release obtained, so we're requesting authorization to issue reimbursement to the involved person in the amount of $1,957.16.
Some of them. Second. Do we get our own estimates on this stuff? It seemed extremely high. Just, I know it's not a big dollar amount, but for what the work was?
In this instance, we did not.
Okay. It's just something we may want to look at?
Absolutely.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The second item I have for you is also an internal claim that was administered by our department. This incident occurred in November of 2022. A county vehicle collided with a guard rail that was not in its line of sight. The vehicle was repaired by Miller's Auto Body, and we are requesting authorization to pay the corresponding invoice for $4,630.6.
Move through.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety Communications, Ryan Horan. Three items. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So to piggyback on Shane, I have a meal request for the actual day of the Eclipse for our staff that'll be operating out of essentially three locations, the EOC, our backup location, and our Noble Soul location. So our request is for an amount not to exceed $3,600 for all staff for two weeks.
Some of them.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second one is for our annual awards ceremony and annual meeting that we have with our staff that you folks have attended the last several years. We do it in December, and we're just coming to you so we can go ahead and get this on the books for the authorization, amount not to exceed $4,500.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the last request that we have, our backup site is nearing completion, and so we need to get our trash can. And so the third request is so that we can get a trash can there to get trash service started.
Waste management?
It is waste management.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hamilton County Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs, Monica Greer.
So as you recall, we had a work session a couple weeks ago regarding the opioid settlement
dollars. And I'm here today just to get a motion to approve or deny the applications and the awards that the Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs Board members have reviewed and approved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. Did any of your applicants focus on youth either from the parental side and visitation, et cetera, with substance abuse?
Yes. We have a really robust program with all of the county schools, all of the public schools in partnership with Journey Counseling. So if a student is identified of having a drug or alcohol problem, or they've had a problem within the school, they receive some intervention services through Journey, and then the parents also receive services, and then they can volunteer to do further services afterwards.
There's a couple federal programs that are federal lobbyists identified that are new. I'll flip those over to you to see whether that might be a match.
Great.
It's got a really short turnaround period.
Okay.
At the end of April.
Okay.
But it may be an opportunity for someone.
Awesome. Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Commissioner Committee Report, Steve.
Our interest committee met with First Person and all of their people last week just to do kind of a review of everything of where we were last year and where we're going this year. Everything looks really good so far, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
Good. I've been contacted by IB Tech about IB Tech Day on April 23.
Yeah.
I may be bringing that up to see if we do a proclamation or acknowledgement of that day.
Okay.
That's a good idea. I'm going to do that.
Okay.
That's fine.
And met with you.
When is that, April 23?
23. So I think we ought to recognize that. We met with the US 31 Coalition Board.
What time it is?
I think it's all day. I think it's just an all-day program. So I think our role would be to acknowledge and help promote that day.
Steve, you had forwarded me either an email or given me some information, and I have it to break and put on my agenda for the April 8 meeting. Okay?
Anything else?
A US 31 Coalition meeting up at Grissom. Continue to push for safety and economic development with that.
Okay.
And continue working on the 911 center and childcare.
Great. All right. Thank you. I don't have anything other than we've been working on the public safety training facility and had the meeting with the RDC just this last week, and things are progressively moving forward. Next up is attorney.
Yes, I have three items for you. The first one is requesting your approval to begin the condemnation process for a parcel for the US 31 infrastructure project. At this point in time, we have made two offers consistent with statute, and so far we've not come to an agreement. The layar has since hired an attorney. We believe we can get this to a resolution, but we still want to request your official approval so that if we need to, we can file this and move forward along with the process. So I have that for your approval today.
Some of them. Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second item I have is the county year 2023 TIF management report. This was produced by Oscar Gutierrez and Bondrick Consulting. They are the advisors for the Hamilton redevelopment commission. This report, what is required by statute, there's an April 1 report and April 15. April 1, we combined them into one, which we believe we do, and we submitted this and presented it to the redevelopment commission on March 14. By statute, we are supposed to submit this to the legislative body of the redevelopment commission, which is the commissioners. And with that being said, we have Oscar Gutierrez here to present that report to you. There's no action items needed from you guys. It's just part of the statute that we have to submit this to you. So don't need to prove it or anything today just for your misinformation. And here's the county two C's.
Here, what think we got?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Connor, for the record. Oscar Gutierrez, Bondrick Consulting, municipal advisor. Commissioners, you have the report in front of you. I feel that the best way to use your time is just to quickly go through it and how to read it, and then answer any questions you may have. Is that okay?
All right.
On the second page of the report, you'll see a table of contents, and that's how this report's laid out, and you know, probably the best guide for the report. On page three of seven is the redevelopment commission information of the commissioners that were appointed in 2023. There were no removals of those commissioners, and there were no paid employees of the RDC. The next page, page four, lists all the allocation areas that are currently under the control of the RDC. There's currently eight of them. One of them been created in 2022, or two have been created in 2022. You see the codes that they were established under and their function. Those things can typically change. However, all of these functions were the same for the redevelopment commission. The established dates and the expiration dates is one thing I will point you to. If you notice, for the last two EDAs or allocation areas for the US 31 North and the US 31 North, I mean South, they'll say 25 years. And the reason it says 25 years is because the clock hasn't started under expiration. The clock will not start under expiration until that is issued against those two allocation areas. Those are the two allocation areas that were created for Baker's Corner to assist with infrastructure improvements in the future.
Do we have an ETA on the planned issuance?
Probably within the next three to five years. As things are being developed, there's not a whole lot of activity currently happening, but as development starts going into the Baker's Corner area, we'll be able to issue that and start the clock so that the allocation area. I don't believe that the intent is for this to be in perpetuity. It's just there's no allocation. There's no development yet to take advantage of.
To that point, as the development does start coming to us, that's when we can start discussing how that would be. And that would come to you guys prior to bringing it into the redevelopment commission.
The next item, the next page, page five, lists your revenues and expenditures per allocation area and the fund balances. This is going to look slightly different than your annual report that's submitted to Gateway because we have to net out every single one of the transfers that were done through inter funds. And also, when we do the revenues and expenditures, we combine all of the fund balances. For example, Thompson Consumer Electronics, as you've noticed at the bottom for fund balances, there are a total of three. You combine the three. Actually, that's a bad example because two of them don't have any money, but let's use the same example for the Village Park in 96. Oh, that's another one. I only have one. My point is that when you combine them all, sometimes it changes the revenues and expenditures. One item on this page that I want to highlight is the 96th Street and US 421. That is the fund that is generating the most TIF currently. It is said to, it is going to sunset in It is set to, it is going to sunset in twenty thirty-one.
What date?
Twenty thirty-one.
Page twenty thirty-one.
And the goal is to use those excess funds to fund the proposed training center. So the training center, under current legislature, you're allowed to use TIF dollars for public safety, and creating a public safety training facility would meet that requirement. So we created a model that shows that under this TIF, the Redevelopment Commission could allocate up to twenty million dollars towards that project and be paid fully through TIF funds without having to use any operational dollars from the county.
That require bond, correct?
Yes. That's correct.
And the bond period you project to be the life of the TIF?
It would only go to the life of the TIF.
Thank you.
The next page is if you had any residential TIFs, which the county currently doesn't have any. We could if we ever determine that. And the last page, Commissioner, which kind of goes into your question around debt, is highlighting all the debt from the Redevelopment Commission, which is, there's currently five bonds. It shows their payment amounts, outstanding principal and interest, and principal and interest paid to date, plus the final maturity when those will take place. One thing that, when you look at this report that I want to highlight is it shows principal interest outstanding, and those numbers look high. However, when you tell people how much money you own your house, you don't tell them how much money you owe with principal and interest. You only usually count for the principal amount. So just want to make sure that you're aware that that PNI outstanding is.
So it's a gross stuff in, you know, with all included interest?
It's all inclusive. That's all that will be paid. Yeah. So the numbers look high, but again, it's principal and interest for the life of the bonds. And with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have on the report.
This is very helpful. Thank you.
And Commissioners.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Oscar.
Thank you.
The, again, there's no action required, just informational, first statute to be submitted to the legislative body. The last item I have, I wanted to bring to your attention. The Town of Sheridan and Adams Township have been discussing the possibility of going through the reorganization, or statute of reorganization process. There are implications for county operations and they have moved forward to this point in time and have asked to meet formally, but I believe it's necessary now at this point that you three meet with their reorganization committee as all three of board commissioners and to discuss any either support, opposition, or concerns with their governing body. So we ask for your guys' approval to set that meeting with the appropriate representatives from Sheridan, Town of Sheridan and Adams Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all. You guys have anything? Thank you.
Director of Administration.
Yes. Thank you. Several items for you this afternoon. First off, presenting for your review and approval, Lisa Hanny from the Four-H Purdue Extension Program is seeking your approval of the minimum boat storage bid level for prospective operators for the upcoming winter boat storage season. Four-H Buildings and Grounds Committee has decided to leave the minimum bid storage at thirteen thousand two hundred dollars again this year, and Lisa is seeking your approval to establish that as the minimum acceptable bid for the bid process.
So moved.
Second, I did check with Director Wood to make sure we did not use that, need that facility with the Bear Grounds reconstruction, and we're good.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll let Lisa know. Next, presenting for your review and approval, Jason LaMasta, Director of the Health Department, is seeking authorization to utilize some non-reverting health funds to purchase a Chevy Traverse or similar type vehicle for the Health Department nursing staff and a Dodge Ram or similar transit vehicle for the education program staff. These are appropriate purchases for these non-reverting funds that the department needs to utilize, and Jason is asking for your authorization to move forward with the quote "direct vehicle purchase" process. He also is asking or requesting that these vehicles, once obtained, not participate in the CNG conversion process because of the significant reduction in usable storage space that would entail and the significant impact that it would have on the utility of the vehicles, given what they need them for and the fact that they would be utilizing the rear cargo area for moving and storing things, and the CNG tank makes that very difficult, if not inaccessible, from the rear. So I ask for a motion to approve his request to move forward with that process.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Have we ever analyzed that program? I think it's time that we look at the cost of maintaining the facility, the cost of equipping vehicles, and the savings.
I, Mr. Stevens began that process before he left, and I, after meeting with several department heads over the last year, I'm planning to bring that up and have you assess where we're at at this point in time and where we go from here.
So where do you think your timetable is with that?
Do you think, Steve Wood?
All right, next three months, we have what you need to know.
Okay.
Yeah, more than by a month.
It's just a consistent request not to upgrade the vehicles.
I understand.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And three, presenting for your discussion, possible appointment, revocation or rescission. It was recently brought to my attention that Greg Goodnight, who was this body appointed to the Fishers Planning Commission to fill a Democrat Fall Creek Township spot, does not reside in Fall Creek Township as is required. Therefore, a request has been made that he be released from this appointment, and then a new appointment be made for someone who resides in Fall Creek Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We're gonna have to advertise, or what?
You know, I keep asking for people, and when they give us the person and they see the requirements, but it's just hard to find somebody.
I'll get with the individual that notified us of this situation.
Peterson? Yeah.
See if he has any.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Township Trustee might be open to.
Who was that?
Township Trustee might be open to.
Next, presenting for your information, Kevin Corham, County Assessor, has advised that he is planning to move the Clay Township Assessor staff out of the leased space in the Clay Township Government Assessor, excuse me, Government Building. That should occur sometime during the first half of April. He wanted to make you aware of that, given that he's had prior discussions with you on this matter, and also given there was potential for other county needs that were being looked at. I just.
We're gonna go walk through that building next week. And did we invite?
Kevin's coming with us.
Yeah, Kevin, but did we invite Chris Stikes?
No, we're not.
Could you invite Chris Stikes?
And is that this Wednesday that that's supposed to occur?
It's this Wednesday at what, eleven-thirty or something? Hang on. Yeah, what is that, eleven-thirty?
I will let Chris know.
Feel true.
Although, at least based on my conversations with Chris, he feels he has.
Yeah, he may be able to accommodate his own space needs until we figure out where he wants to land.
That's what he indicated. I'll let him know in case he takes a look at it.
I think it'd be a good idea, just in case.
Sure. Next item presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, I have a request from Kathy Williams on behalf of the Noble Soul Noon Kiwanis Club. They're seeking approval to move forward with their annual project of putting small memorial U.S. flags out around the Hamilton County Courthouse Square for the upcoming Memorial Day holiday. The flags would be put out on or about May twenty-third of 2024 and then removed on or about May twenty-eighth of 2024. Seeking for your approval for that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from Kelly McVay on behalf of Indiana P&amp;E Festival Committee seeking approval to utilize a portion of the Courthouse Square on May eighteenth of 2024 for a part of the annual Indiana P&amp;E Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
The TIFs are coming up.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from Michael Systemino, Noble Soul VFW Quarter Master, who is seeking approval to conduct the annual VFW Memorial Day Ceremony on Courthouse Square on Monday, May twenty-seventh of 2024, between approximately eleven o'clock a.m. and twelve-thirty p.m. He is also, as did the prior requestee, has provided their event application and certificate of insurance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I'm presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from Mike Hobbs, Director of nine-one-one Communications, seeking a formal proclamation from the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners proclaiming or designating the week of April fourteenth of 2024 through April twentieth of 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Hamilton County, Indiana. Kim Roush has prepared the formal proclamation document for your signature.
So moved.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, presenting for your information, I recently received communication from the Indiana Department of Transportation reminding the county about the upcoming State Road Thirty-two reconstruction project that will be going on in four phases. That will be beginning on April first of 2024. Project is planned to occur in four consecutive phases between April first and mid-July of 2024. Those four phases will all involve full closure of small segments of State Road Thirty-two during this period. Additional construction will go on beyond July and will hopefully wrap up in November of 2024, but that additional time period beyond the first four phases will not include any complete closures. Just a heads up for you.
So are we gonna put that on our website? I think that would be good to put on the website, front page.
I will reach out to Tammy and.
And just for those of us who are impaired, I think it'd be good if we could arrange for Diana to send out county-wide emails to remind employees it's closed. It's a periodic.
It's gonna get really difficult.
It's not gonna be fun.
Yeah, Diana, I will make sure we send that to local county employees also.
Day or two notice.
Next, presenting for your review, I have the nepotism ordinance certificates that were submitted by elected officials for 2023 certification and compliance with the county nepotism policy. I had omitted or forgotten to do this previously, but I just wanted to present those to you and pass them. No signatures are needed on your behalf.
Did you review these?
I have looked at them, yes.
Okay, so we don't have any issues with nepotism in what's reported?
Nothing from what's been submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Next and last item I believe I have is just a request for this body to ratify the signature and the action of Commissioner Altman with respect to signing the permit application for the nine-one-one center that was required sometime this last week or so in order to keep the project moving forward.
I don't want to ratify it. I want, this is very good.
You know, it'll be a couple days off. I don't think it's over yet.
I'm looking.
And I know people.
Second.
They're just taking care of her out there.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. That's all I.
Thank you. Sheriff.
I don't have anything today for the group. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm on the monitor.
I'll ask the auditor. We have the Indigo Suitification Regarding Lobbyist that needs to be signed for next time express.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Just for the president only. Monthly report from the Clerk of the Soaket Court for December two thousand twenty-three, January twenty-four, and February twenty-four.
Let's hear it.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
County Treasurer's Monthly Report dated February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Move through.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The Health Thrift Expenditure Report for February twenty-twenty-four.
Let me hear it.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Payroll Claims for Payroll Paid March fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Notice of Final Disposal of a Vehicle of Two Thousand Seventeen Ford Escape.
What department?
Well, the Ford Commission was all right. The vehicle was under Ford Commission. It doesn't say what department it was assigned to.
Move through.
Second, is it? No, I think it did, I missed it.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. There's been a motion and a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Notice of Final Disposal of the HHW Building.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then a cleanse.
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else to come before the board? Mr. Neil.
After reviewing the bids from earlier today, we are recommending an award to Dr. Robertson in the amount of one million two hundred sixty thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars. One million two hundred sixty thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and forty cents, as read.
So moved.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the board? Then at this time, we will recess to exec session, Conference Room One A. We'll discuss job performance evaluations on individual employees. So thank you very much.
I would say nepotism. Are we in here? I didn't want to.